This time we'll call it Tuesday, February 15, 2022, meeting the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Stinas, and myself, Jack Willie are your supervisors. Lisa Smith is here. We have an auditor's office. Landon Goke is our administrative assistant. And the first item on our agenda this morning, as usual, is David Drier, our engineering. Good morning, David.
First item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on awarding equipment bids. We went out for bids for one grader, two cloud trucks with two boxes. The first item is John Deere grader that we're recommending purchasing from Martin Equipment for $285,500. And Sean, you're giving questions on that?
Is that the same grader that we got last year? Same number, same?
So far, yeah.
Yeah. I know we wanted to diversify a little bit, so we have some of each, but.
It'd be nice.
Tough to do if the bids are $20,000 or.
Yeah.
Can you, how was that compared to last year's bid?
$50,000 higher. 10%.
And so they come back in six months and say, we need some more.
They say not. No, it's price protected right now, but there is a price increase. Another 3% the first of March. So we're price protected up until like the 25th of February.
By that, you mean what? We gotta say yeah or no?
Back today.
Okay.
Yeah. If you push your decision till the middle of March, I think the quote was dated like the 22nd. But we don't actually have to physically give you the money yet.
No, no, sir. And on the second page is the two trucks. And we recommend the RDO Truck Center, the MAC Trucks.
Are you gonna make one motion or three?
Um.
We'll do them separately.
Okay.
I would make the motion to approve the purchase of the John Deere grader as presented.
I will second. Motion and a second to approve the purchase of the grader from Martin Equipment. A John Deere at $285,500. And further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Next item is the two dump trucks, a tandem axle dump trucks. We're recommending the RDO Truck Center from Davenport for two MAC trucks at $209,376. They also bid two Volvo trucks for $202,774,000. We're recommending the MACs as somewhat more expensive, about $6,000. And as Sean can elucidate on that, but that generally because of parts availability, the increased cost for parts, and higher resale with the MAC trucks. So that was our recommendation.
Yeah, so visiting with the former MAC salesman, he never bid Volvo, and he has since moved on from his job. But he never bid Volvo, so I called him just to visit and ask, and he said, I would go with the MAC, not only because of the higher resale and the brand notoriety, but the Volvo truck takes more Volvo exclusive parts per se, the brakes. Well, they're significantly more money. And then sometimes getting the parts, you have to get it from Volvo rather than buying it aftermarket like we've been doing. So he said, I wouldn't deviate from the MAC or you're gonna.
Are we going to have any MACs now?
No, we do not. So.
That's what I thought. I didn't know they're, you know, they're great equipment, but.
Yeah, they're kind of more top shelf, really.
And how does this compare to last year's bid? Do you know that?
Well, it's higher, but we've changed the spec in the truck. We're going with the heavier truck, a little longer truck and more horsepower. So I believe they're about $20,000 higher. But I can't say how much is different because we're not comparing apples to apples as far as.
And we were running, we, last year's bid was international, is that correct?
Uh, it was Peterbilt last year.
Peterbilt.
Yes.
And the important thing is that they can deliver, they say, in September.
They might have them before you got this.
Correct. We're probably the same month at the same time. Astonishing, really.
Yes, so. But these are locked into, correct?
Correct. Yep. He said that's locked in.
That's what we need. Yeah, I would make a motion to approve. The purchase of the MAC, is that what I'm asking?
Yeah, I would second that. A motion and a second to approve a purchase of the, from RDO Truck Center in Davenport, a MAC, two MAC trucks, at the total price of $299,376,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carry.
Finally, to complete the configuration for the snow pile, the two dump bodies. And we're recommending purchasing from Monroe Truck Equipment in Monroe, Wisconsin, for $199,782.
No question, you said the new MACs are a longer truck?
It'll be a foot longer than the trucks we're currently running.
Yes.
So still take these 14-foot boxes? They will take a 14-foot. We've run 13-foot in the past.
Oh, okay. So that's the price on, they know that, though. They're well aware of the Peterbilt or MAC and they're, they know what the specs were.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion to approve the bid from Monroe Truck for the truck. Do you know how long they're up?
When you say they can.
They say you get the truck and we'll play ball. Now, you're gonna ask about the price locking in. That's a little more gray. Right now, Corten steel is hard to come by, so they want to substitute Corten with mild steel. I said, no, that won't work. You gotta use stainless. Well, I hope we can get it in there, but it shouldn't be much more, is what I was told.
So we're talking just a stainless liner or?
The frame. Not the, not the tub itself that would hold the rock, but the framing underneath will have to be stainless. If they cannot find Corten.
Okay.
I was still with my.
We have a motion and a second to approve truck equipment from Monroe at $198,782. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried.
Well, action regarding rock contracts. We've got the contracts from the suppliers here. First one is River City Stone. 3,505.6 tons at $24,714.48. Contract for Bellevue Sand and Gravel, $34,804.8 tons at $227,508. And Preston ready next, 1,966.4 tons at 13,764.8. This is just the formal contract for their aggregate proposals of previous previously. We recommend proceeding with that.
Motion to.
I would second.
A motion and a second, author, Chair to sign the rock contracts for Bellevue Sand and Gravel, River City Stone, and Preston ready next. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried.
And finally, we have two permits for working the right way. The first one is for the Coqueta Valley Electric. We're doing some work in Fairfield Township, Section 29, undergrounding power and fiber optic cable along 25th Avenue. Recommend. Who will that? And another permit for Andrew Telephone Company. They're doing replacing existing cable along the Iron Bridge Road from Highway 62 to the river. They're also doing work along Highway 62. And I got right of way to make a connection, so we recommend approval of that as well.
Okay, being it's two different companies, I would approve them over to Valley Electric. Right away.
One second. A motion and a second to approve the construction contract for Coqueta Valley Electric. All those in favor?
Right.
I, motion carried.
Motion to approve the Andrew Telephone Company.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the submit for Andrew Telephone Company. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried.
Items I have today.
Had some comments on the work they've been doing on 216th Little Mill, I would call it. And Big Bell, they said it really looks nice out there. They've been trimming trees up along the road. Ripping some brush, cut some stuff along the roadway. Had a couple of compliments on it.
Ready for the snow.
Any more on that one area where the roads, I mean, Craig's trying to take the road out?
I haven't had a chance to look at that yet.
Okay.
See if.
Do you have any questions? Maybe get some work done there. Where they lose their fencing. Those are the road for good ones.
We'll continue aerials and see if it's moving or if it's just kind of state wise there.
Okay, we'll see you later with Shandra.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do we have any visitors, visitors or citizens that wish to address the board? Okay. We'll move on to Heidi. Heidi, cool with Northern.
Morning.
Good morning.
Is that all you do? Drive around the country or?
That's the only thing I do.
That's your job?
What can, what can we say, right?
You know what? This time of year, you never know, but it's worked out very well to be coming up here. And so.
You've got some decent roads.
Yes.
It's a really nice blazer when you, when, oh my gosh.
These are, they hold up, hold the shell jacket. So, well, today I.
Are you asking her for one?
I thought he was hitting two.
I was really thinking you might have needed to bring him one the next time.
It'd be less than $2.99.
I think it's like $3.
He'll give you a penny. That's the kind of guy he is.
Well, just, does the board have the contract in the bottom of the summary? I have copies. If, as it's, Luanne, did you hand it to him?
No.
Okay. And I don't. Okay, that's fine. I was like, I have it, but I didn't, yeah. That is really funny.
I knew you'd be bringing them, I can see.
I've always got, I've always got copies. So, you did take my copy. Well, I always bring out. So today, what I'm going to go is go over the sale that went, the sale results of yesterday, which went very, very well. And then there's a resolution. There was a resolution to sign the contract today to lock in your interest rates.
That's what I wanna do.
So we've taken a lot of steps here with the, you know, with going through, getting the document put together, getting through the bids, making sure we have the dollars to finance this jail project. Today, we're at the point where we are locking in interest rates. There was an order period yesterday that went very, very well. And the bonds were offered. You had some strong local interest with local banks, including the Coqueta State Bank, Jefferson State Bank, and First Bank and Trust. So, you know, the combination of your good credit and your local supporting this bond issue. We have, we have an interest rate of 2.34%. That includes the costs associated with the bonds. And then. So this is a 20-year bond. This has a call date. If we're looking at this bond sale summary, it's, we're on page two. We're looking at an optional call date in 2032. So these rates will be locked in, and this, this schedule is locked in until 2032. At that time, after 2032, you could pay the, if you had cash on hand, which you'll just be levying the payment, you could pay it off early. Or if rates have dropped, at that point, you could, you could refinance the remaining 10 years.
What if they go?
If rates go up. This is a fixed rate.
Okay, so.
So you, this is an option, optional call on the issuer. The bond investors do not have an option to, to call this. This is, any option is on the county only. You can keep this as is, or you have that option after June 1 of 2032. So, and then this has been structured with that levy rate of that 32 cents that was in the referendum. This has a levy of 29 cents. So, you know, we're underneath, underneath what, what you told everyone in the referendum, which is good. And so we're very positive to get here to this date.
So are we. So are we, believing without a doubt.
The next page, Exhibit A and Exhibit B goes over the rate and the use of the funds. Exhibit A shows the par amount, which will be the, the principal that should be paying back, which is less than that 5.9, 5.890. And then you have a small amount of premium that is less than the disminimis effect, which means minimal, which helps to pay for just a small amount of issuance costs. And below there is how the, how the funds will be used to be paid for the construction of the law enforcement center. Exhibit B, the focus we want to look on is that yield. To see within each year, there's an interest rate associated with it. The earlier years have lower interest rates in the, as, as the maturity is going to proceed, that higher interest rate, so goes from the points of five to two. And then down below there, you'll see that true interest cost that takes into account the cost of the bonds, the depreciation of the bonds at the 2.34%.
So we have, we'll bring in more money, some, whatever. Can we make interest pay or principal payments each year or is that?
You can, you can build up a fund, but these, these, to get the rates that you have today, those, the, it is, those payments are locked in until that 2032 date. So if you have addition.
32, we could pay it off.
You could pay it off if you had the cash on you. You could pay it, you could pay it off. You know, it's planned that you'll just have that, you know, that 29 cents left each year to make that payment.
The first 10 years for sure.
Yep. And then if there's, if you fall into some cash of some kind, you have that option.
Well, I got another offer right there, meeting on Friday in Davenport. They were bringing 10 prisoners up here on a regular basis. The nice guys. That's a hundred thousand.
So they're not federal prisoners, are they?
No.
Well, that can, that can offset, you know, also, if you have, if you have a cash flow, you could look to offset that and lower the, lower that 29 cents.
Or you can pay the employees that are gonna be working in the end.
As, at the added expense.
That you're gonna have. It's not just gonna be profit.
Profit, yes, but, but. But if, but if there is, if you do come into other cash, you can, you can look to lower that levy. From a timing standpoint and what happens next, I have a resolution for you today that you received from your bond counselor. That resolution locks in these rates you see in here today. I'd ask that, these are, this is, this was a spell of a public offering. I'd ask to take that contract with me today. We take the minute that you approve it, and we have two hours to disseminate that into the, into the municipal market for everyone to see. So.
It's very clear in this, in this document of what time we do this.
It's very, yes, so I have it.
It's time sensitive, so that's why.
Very time.
Whenever you make your motion and it's approved, I have to document that.
Okay, are you going over the rest of these exhibits or what do you, what do you want to do there?
Well, are there questions? Really, after this, it just shows, I have that tax, that tax impact levy, then some of the market conditions that you've seen here of where we're right, we're seeing that we're still in a very low interest rate environment. You know, if there's anything I'll add is that, you know, the Fed does meet next one, next month, there is. The question is, is if they're going to have a hike of 0.25% or 0.5%?
So. You wanna beat that.
We made a great rate on today. We are seeing some tightening in the market that's pushing rates up based off of the inflationary numbers and things that we're seeing outside of, outside of Jackson County.
Just so you know, that we did, we did put this into a resolution, so should you approve it, this is resolution number 863-02-15-2022. And this is a resolution that is directing the acceptance of a proposal to purchase 5.84, subject to adjustment, general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2022A.
And so, Lisa, you'll want to adjust that to the 5890 when, when you, when you finish up your.
Yeah, yeah. So I've got, so correcting, correcting what I just said, so it's still Resolution 863. If we put it on resolution paper.
Should be.
It's okay to change it.
Well, it's okay when it says subject to adjustments.
Okay. Okay, so I did correct my minutes here to show that it is 5.89, general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2022A.
I would move to approve.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried.
Can I let the record show that this was done at 9:24?
Would it be acceptable to?
So I have this. Is this okay for you or do you have an original?
That one, if I can leave one with you and take one with me.
I'm fine with that. So I will sign mine. I will note 9:24 on that. Perfect. Do you want me to sign yours also?
Great. And then.
And does it need to be filed state or, no? Okay, I was gonna say, cause if not, I can get my stamp.
From a timeline standpoint, two weeks from now, you have one more agenda item that just officializes and legalizes everything, and then the county will have proceeds on 1/16.
We will have a closing. I think that's what we discussed was a closing.
Yes. So we'll have to have an official closing for this.
Closings are good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like in the little papers.
Yeah, it's just, it's very similar to that. It's a, you know, it's a closing where you actually will sign everything about two weeks before, and then, and then it's just a, it's also just a wire.
So if it's the three days, we're right to receive that too?
Well, there is a cost.
And you pay it.
Well, it's been, it's been a pleasure. We're, we're getting down to the finish line.
I appreciate all the work you've done and hanging with us and spend time consuming, I know that, but.
We certainly do appreciate your efforts on our behalf.
And along the whole, nice to be here.
At least we're at this point. Now we can just move forward.
And I will say, congratulations to the county on your rating again, and all the work that Lisa and Shelley did on that rating call. I just wanna say it again, they, he's got a, he's got a good group here.
That was a good session.
It was. Yeah, that was very interesting and, and, yeah, it was a good session.
Thanks to Dave Hayer, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Dave helped us some, yeah. You need to make a phone call like that.
Okay, well, anything else today?
So we don't actually know then who actually bought these.
So I could, I could get a, you know, a list of each, a breakdown of, of that.
I think that would be interesting.
Yeah.
If you could do that, I think, you know, specifically if we do have some local investors, I think that would be nice to know.
Yeah.
If you could do that, we would appreciate that.
Well, and there were, there were orders for almost double the amount of bonds that you had. So that says, you know, how much interest that there was, you know, in a, in a, I would say, in a, in a moving market, which is, says a lot to, says a lot to the county.
So we can get twice as much money?
There's interest for it. There's interest for it.
You know, I just am really pleased that some of the local funding institutions participated. That was exciting here yesterday, yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much, Heidi.
We'll be in touch.
Drive safe.
Okay, this time we'll be joined by Holly McPherson and Tricia Wagner from ECIA.
Again.
Morning ladies.
It's gonna be the occurrence lady.
No.
Don't see Tricia anymore. She hides somewhere up there.
I know too. That is natural.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, so what, what we're coming here today for is, as you might know, the KIDIO Beautiful Home Pride Program is to be ending, it's how your contract was done on June, is it June 30th of 2022? So we're just reaching out to all of the past participants to see if they'd be interested in continuing the program. So for Jackson County, Dave Hayer was the coach. ECA is going to be taking over that with his retirement. So what we're wanting to do is to continue the, the local effort with the communities with that program. And with that, we're gonna be looking to pay for this, the local match from the communities. And then ECA will be utilizing internal grant funding to provide the coaching grant writing from our community. So what we're looking at doing for Jackson County, we are asking for the local match to be $5,000 per year for five years. With your, the materials that you have there, it does have a, they have the proposed contract as well as resolution, and the PowerPoint that has some of the program updates. So in past years, you not had your own committee for the county, but you're more than welcome to do that. So you could actually, you know, look at that as having like your own goals and own projects throughout county rather than, you know, in individual. Cities can still do this as well, and they're on a more eat diet, but you could do this as a county-wide thing too. So if you want, I don't know, do you have any questions on that?
I guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out what your actual role would be.
Okay.
ECIA.
Yeah.
Just as a coordinator with the different cities or?
Quick, if you want to quickly look through the PowerPoint. So it does have some examples of some different projects, so done with the program in the different cities. So the first page just talks about the program itself and the history of it.
Sure.
And you all started in 2017. And then, so the KIDIO Beautiful Projects, it's talked about the different types of projects that we have done as an overall, you know, creating banners on local campaigns, public murals. All those, just talking with the community, it's really whatever you want it to be, we're just serving you as the, as a resource and as a coach to kind of help you identify, help, help coordinate the committee, meet with them once a month, and just decide what kinds of projects you want to do for the, for the county, and then help identify funding sources and help with that grant writing and fundraising and all those sorts of things. So that's, that's the overall gist of it. If you want to skip forward, I don't know if it's very easy, but there are about halfway through a list of projects that we've done. So Bellevue, those, that's a list of everything that has happened, um. In fact, so the idea behind the whole program is not to continue it past five years as far as getting KIDI funding. And having us as your coach, um, they want it to be where the committee actually is able to take off with this after five years and do it on their own. And so Bellevue has been able to do that, so that's wonderful. Um, so what we want to do is do this with the county and get a committee formed. And do that same type of thing whereby then that committee can then continue after that five years and do that type of work. And come up with those ideas, and we would still obviously be a resource, we just wouldn't have that time committed every, every month. For, and actually, maybe that would help to explain it a little bit, if you want to go to then, first back. Talks about the membership, well, there's, so first of all, I guess, um. It talks about the difference, so for the, for the, it's actually years six through ten, I guess you could say. There's your, years one through five that you've already had, and now your six through ten, three new members, it talks about that. So there's the five thousand per year, um, for five years for communities' population of ten thousand, so that's pretty good fall. But then, when you look at, so then the hometown benefits on that hometown pride return on investment page. It specifically spells out there, um, what you would have with the program. So you would have one state federal or foundation grant written annually valued at a thousand, five thousand per grant. Per community, so you would get one of those. Per year, correct? The county would, not per community in the county, but per the county. Right. And then, so what you're getting from ECIA is a staff time dedicated to the community for at least forty-eight hours per month. And that is for an approximate value of eight thousand annually. Um. And then it just talks about, you know, the opportunity to move community projects forward that have been stalled or on a back burner with a coach. Providing support and assistance, customizing innovative resources and using development tools to make certain community plans and initiatives get developed, funded. And movementally completed. Um, and then the last page, uh, talks there about, um, the staffing again, talks about forty-eight hours. And then, should the number that we have exceed ten communities, um, we would not spread it thinner, we would, we would figure out a way to get more staff time. So don't be worried about that. Um, and the, the remit would be effective July first of twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty-seven. Um, and it can be visited annually, the contract does that in there. So you'll do one year and then revisit next year, say, hey, what we get out of this last year, so it's not like you're signing for five.
So.
I know Bellevue had their own hometown pride, and so will they be kind of all in one now? And basically your coaching is, or is this a countywide hometown pride or?
That's what we're asking, so Bellevue, we were reaching out to those that have already been past members. So Bellevue participated the last five years, uh, they have their co- committee established, so they are just going to go on their own. They don't want any more coaching or help from us. Um, however, like Preston, they want to continue, um. McCoke, but I don't know, we are going, we're going to all these council meetings in the process right now, we're trying to figure this out by mid-March. So, um, but then like Baldwin, they were never on last, the last five years, so they want to sign on this year for the next five years. However, their rate's a lot, a lot cheaper because the hometown pride, the state is going to be providing match for them. So that's why we're asking for, we want to see if you guys want to continue, establish a committee, kind of determine your goals, see where you want to move it. Um, and then we would be the coach since previously it was JCEA. Um, and Dave's leaving, so, um, he's handing it over to us and saying, hey, if you guys want to work with these communities, um. You know, I'm supportive of that, it's a great program.
So their potential that, um, the new hire that they're going to have that Jackson County has come on like Alliance. Taking, not taking Dave's place, but working with, with Kelly.
Yeah.
That, um, they might step into that role that Dave is vacating.
Not to our knowledge, I mean, he's been supportive of this, um, he's, hasn't indicated that, so he's kind of. Worked with Kelly on getting us up and running with it, so if he intended for that, I don't think he would have asked us to do this, but.
Say, I don't know.
Cause he, he did Jones County as well.
Yeah, I know.
So I don't think he wants.
Well, I don't mean David.
No, right. Yeah, I don't know that, from what we understood, no, but.
Okay.
So, well, I, uh, the way it appears, and since the grant funding has run out for him, his coaching. That's kind of where it's coming from, is, is where I gather. I mean, that funding is no longer available to him, so we.
Right.
Either as a community or a county, or as a whole, have to come up with that. And I know Bellevue was going to maybe restructure theirs a little bit somehow, I doubt we weren't, we weren't really sure. Actually missed the last meeting, but, um, what, where were they were going to go next?
I think they would probably talked about that at that beginning, maybe. Um, we had sent an email to Abby and then she said she checked with that committee, and maybe Emily, was it Emily, maybe? Um, who's part of that committee, and then she replied back saying that she spoke to the committee and they were going to go on their own, so. Which is fine. We just wanted to do our due diligence, reach out to people, counties, cities, um, because we've expanded this into Delaware County and Cedar County. Currently, so they're on for five years right now. Um, and like I said, we're going to be going to Andrew, um, Baldwin. We just aren't sure how many communities yet we'll have, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I, like I said, I missed the last meeting, I haven't talked to Tom, Tom to share about, we know, but I haven't talked to him after that, so. Um, I'd be curious to see how many supporters you have, I guess, before I make that commitment.
Yeah, I think that we need to give some discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Got your information?
Yeah.
We have additional questions, we know how to get ahold of you.
Yep, you sure do. Thanks a lot for your time.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
So we're waiting for Holly and, no, that's with Becky, is Becky coming down?
She was on the phone.
Okay, well, we'll recess till we're joined by Becky Chapin and Tony. And this time we're being joined by Becky Chapin and Tony, checklist, uh, of the VA. Good morning.
Good morning.
Lynn was going to join us, but she was available, I'm going to assume that maybe she's not available and maybe she'll come over if she does get free up. So just, we thought the three of us would chat with you since we're discussing a secretary that supports all three of the offices was the reason. Um, so as you know, the Veterans Affairs Assistant resigned. Um, with that, Tony has been visiting with his commission about increasing Brianna Kirk's hours, she's the secretary in the Pemerals Annex by five hours per week. To offset some of that workload, and in addition to that, he was going to retain Debbie as an assistant and work less hours. What we would like to do is have approval to increase Brianna to thirty hours a week, she's at twenty-five now, and we, she makes fourteen ninety-four now. We would like to move her to the sixteen seventy-one that the assistant was making. Um, she is going to go with Tony.
Well, actually, we'll get, uh, we'll take the accreditation class, the, we can march seven through the eleventh. The accreditation is now all online, um, and then as we go forward, any continued education. She would go to San Antonio this summer, June, uh. So we can get up to speed, it's going to take us six still, six to twelve months to have our, what they call the PIV cards. And get access to the federal BBMS system. Um, we lost that, you know, when, we're, by retaining Debbie, we'll still have some access, but when, when Christie left, she left with her PIV card. Uh, and it just takes a long time to get that, so we have access to the federal system.
So Brianna's going to go through the same accreditation process to process the veteran benefits, the same, um, as the others in the department is. Um, she's doing a fantastic job, Lynn was going to come and kind of touch base with, I mean, that is why we're all three in full support of retaining her at the thirty hours a week and the increased pay. Um, we feel it will be supported within the budget, um, it'll be offset by what, obviously, we're, we were, we were going to recommend this effective March first, I think is the date. Um, that way Christie, Christie's technically done February twenty-eighth, she's taking vacation now, so there would be no overlap in the pay or anything. So essentially, she would assume the pay that.
So will she still be at the front desk too and?
So my plan would be that she's there at the front desk, uh, the majority of the time, but obviously, she's going to be working with a veteran. And she's going to have to have, you know, just like me, she'd be new at it, she's going to have to be able to do some of this paperwork as she's learning the processes. We have that office available where Christie was at, and she could step back in there, we have a buzzer that sounds when somebody walks in the door. I would try to arrange it so that both of us aren't working with a veteran at the same, same time, so one of us can always step out and see what's going on in the, in the lobby.
Or Lynn too.
Or Lynn lives there, if she's available. Uh, ideally, she'll be out there, um, I'll continue to, you know, work with the veterans and do outreach and we'll have Debbie to fall back on. Uh, to help fill in some of those hours while we're learning, and it'll move forward with that, from there to see how, how the office is managed. Over the next five or six months.
So with this card that we lost, is, is, will our veterans see any effect to that?
No, it, what they'll see is they have a brand new, uh, director who doesn't have access to that system and. And will be training, uh, Brianna to that access also. Um, it might slow a little bit of us being able to file appeals and supplementals and see where their claim is at. Right now, I can't go into the federal system and print off all their medical records from the military, because I don't have access to that. So I have to wait till Debbie's available to come in and, and get that information for me, and then I can still go through the files and, and work on a claim for them. Um, I just can't see the process and give them updates as frequently as, um, Christie could have or Debbie, Debbie could have. Now, it's, it slows things a little bit, uh, but the current benefits they're receiving, it does not change any of that.
So Debbie could still do this, correct?
But we're still be limited to, I'm, I'm thinking about sixteen hours a week.
For Debbie?
For Debbie, yes.
So how long does it take to get this card?
So I had a conversation with Christie about this before she left. Christie took the class in June of nineteen, she did not receive her PIV card until March or April of twenty. It almost took her a year, now they supposedly have streamlined the process, so there's some positive things that have developed. Well, we don't know if they're positive, they're always changing things, but the, the accreditation is only offered online. So you'd have to sit in front of a computer for thirty-two hours. Um, and they make sure you have a camera on, they have to be able to watch you, but, so, but it's going to be offered every, um, March. August and November, so a couple of things, we, we can see how this works with me and Brianna. If we decided in the future that we needed a, another full-time assistant, we can send them through, you know, August or, or November. So accreditation, the training for accreditation happens three times a year, which we didn't have that before. They're supposed to have streamlined the process, so hopefully within six months of taking that class, we will have that access and we will be moving forward. Uh, it's just, it's just fair government, I can only guess.
Well, we all know how things, all the time, shift a little.
So he's thinking with retaining Debbie at the sixteen hours a week or as needed. Having Brianna an extra five hours a week dedicated to VA services and see how that goes with the department, so Christie worked thirty hours a week. Debbie was only here twenty-four hours a week, but she was director twenty-six, thirty-five, so he's thinking, you know, it'll be a cost savings to the budget. And if it works for the makeup of the office, and then you have three people, and the event one were to leave again, we wouldn't be in the situation that you're in with the gift card and the access to the records and those kind of things. So Debbie was previously approved at the direct, at the interim director rate of pay that trained with Tony. Uh, we revert her back to what her hourly rate was and retain her at the sixteen hours a week, this plan would be.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay, we've been joined by Lynn Bulks, the Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services. And, uh, we're basically talking about enough, upping of hours for.
Yeah.
Brianna.
Yes, and, and they have both, we've all had conversations about that, and I'm in agreement with everything that they're suggesting in terms of Brianna's time. And he, as you guys know, with our transition from the mental health region moving to state funding, who really knows where that's all going to go? So there is even some stuff, some flexibility within that, if I can envision that I would need more overtime. So, if this is, this works fine from my perspective.
Like I said, well, I hardly ever get over there, but everything I've heard about Brianna is positive, but she's an asset to work, work towards the way it sounds. I mean, if this covers, you know, I, I, I like the idea of you both getting accredited, if that's the case. And I mean, I understand you got to sit in front of the box, but you know, you gotta take your little test after every capsule or everyone do. But, uh, if that's, that's easier than running somewhere maybe too, you know.
Right.
If that streamlines the process and that, I, I don't know.
I hope it does.
Yeah. Yeah. I just, I just don't want to see that we, we drop back into services somehow that we lapse in our services. If we could join with another Veterans Affairs, like, like we did, you know, with the engineer or whatever. You know, it might be that, but as long as Debbie can come in and still do that, I would think she's available.
Yeah, I think she's pretty flexible for.
She has flexible hours, I think it'll be, I think it'll work out well, yeah, moving forward, um, and then we'll have to just reassess as we go. But I, I'm really hoping we get accredited much faster than the, in the past.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Do we need a action on it?
Yeah, because the board technically sets the rate of pay for the VA staff, so even though she's kind of quasi-VAGA, I don't know, I feel like it's probably just in the best interest to. Um, make the motion to increase Brianna.
To increase the hours and then the pay salary.
Yeah.
Okay, so move, second. Second, and that would be five additional hours, and it would be sixteen ninety-one.
Sixteen seventy-one.
Sixteen seventy-one.
Effective March first. And then since we previously made a motion to increase the assistant's pay, which would be Debbie now. Um, I feel like maybe we should just make a motion to set the assistant pay at the twenty-one eighty-four. Right now, she's at the twenty-four sixty-three, which was compensating her for the director.
Okay, we'll take that as a separate motion, okay? We have a motion, um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay, now for the assistant, um, the twenty-one eighty-four.
Motion to approve.
Take it.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've been studying, Brianna's the one, but she's young and resilient.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't.
Okay, next on our agenda is, is Melissa Smith, our Jackson County Auditor.
Good morning, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty-two board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
We have a motion in a second to approve, uh, publication of the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents.
Second, we have a motion in a second, I had that we had to make a prepayment to one of our contractors for the jail. And I believe that was a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
And also thirty-five million.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Shit, whatever we're going to call that.
Yeah, it's coming along nicely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes in the December eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Oh, moved.
I have a motion in the second to approve the filing of the Veterans Affairs Commission meetings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve the renewal of the Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Jimmy B's LLC at twenty-one seven oh one. East Hill Drive Bernard, effective March thirteenth, twenty twenty-two to March twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
A motion in a second to approve the Class C liquor license, um. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
We also need a motion to approve resolution number eight sixty-four dash zero two dash fifteen dash twenty twenty-two. To approve an operating transfer for forty thousand dollars from the general fund, oh, one thousand, to the Capital Projects jail, jail fund. On thirty-three thousand and two.
So it's approved, second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
I, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board here.
Well, we have five minutes, Luanne, before, or ten minutes, I guess, before Christine is due, so do you wanna come up?
Morning.
Good morning.
Calendar this week is kind of evolve on the fly, I'm not sure exactly what's gonna change, but. As for today, at one o'clock this afternoon is the Makoka to sponsor project partner check-in. Um, on M S Teams for Larry, I think you were on the last meeting for this.
So is that a Zoom only, or they having a?
Is it M S Teams, which is like Zoom?
Oh, okay.
So she only sent the link for that, she didn't say anything about a in-person meeting. At two o'clock is the Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting in Muscatine by for Jack. At six o'clock tonight is the Conservation Board meeting, um, in Hurstville and also by Zoom for Larry. Wednesday, February sixteenth, at seven AM is the. All for all of you, the Jackson County Community Health Needs Assessment, and that is also a Zoom meeting.
At seven AM.
Seven AM. All right, at one o'clock that afternoon, uh, we will be having a budget work session. Uh, for all the supervisors. I also think Jack at two thirty that afternoon is going to be in Isaac Kilns update meeting. That's, it's still kind of in the works, um, but it looks like it'll be by Zoom, so I'll let you know what the final. Kelly is on that.
Bonnie called me about it.
Okay. Thursday, February seventeenth at nine AM is the Housing Trust Fund meeting by Zoom for Mike. Um, the limestone gloves R C and D meeting that's listed on there has been moved to February twenty-fourth. And at eleven thirty on Thursday morning is another Isaac. Um, Kilns meeting by Zoom for Jack, possibly, that's kind of tentative too. Um, Saturday, February nineteenth, the Isaacs group will be here to do a site visit to the Hurstville Kilns again, and that'll be at ten thirty. Monday, February twenty-first at eight thirty AM is in Isaac Kilns update meeting by Zoom for Jack. At one o'clock that afternoon, which is an unusual time, will be the Waste Authority meeting of Jackson County for Mike, that's gonna be downstairs. Um, at five o'clock that afternoon is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Board meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at six o'clock is a Together We Build meeting, also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February twenty-second at nine AM. And at four PM that afternoon is the Coca-Cola River Watershed Management Authority's annual board meeting. Um, by Zoom, um, it is for Larry, but all of you can attend, so I put that in your calendars if you want to do that. Business I have today, um, is looking for a motion or to be permission. Um, to advertise the upcoming vacancy on the Veterans Affairs Commission. I did talk to Tony about this a little bit, and I put the list of the commission in your books, um. They, it doesn't happen till June thirtieth, but it's not a gender balanced board at this point. So I need permission to advertise and see if we can get some women to apply for that commission, so we have a.
We don't really have a full commission.
We have a full commission, but it's four men and one woman. So it's not gender balanced. And the, I have two terms that expire on June thirtieth.
Oh.
But this year, it's been, every year almost we have. Um, John Pitlo and Town Waters, their terms will expire in June thirtieth. Um, so they can be reappointed unless we have. Um, a female to appoint. And we have to advertise for at least three months in advance before we can reappoint those two gentlemen.
So you need a motion just to advertise, is that what you're looking for?
We have a motion in a second to authorize Luanne to advertise for the Veterans Affairs Board, all those in favor?
Right.
I, motion carried.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, at this time, will. Is Christina coming down for the, for the public hearing? I would assume. We'll recess, so we're doing by. At this time, we reconvene and we're being, uh. Presented by Christina Trenal, our Jackson County zoning and J S Administrator. Um, to have a public hearing.
Are you opening the public?
Opening a public hearing.
Okay, yep.
Okay. I have a request for an amendment to the Jackson County zoning map, this is on behalf of Chris and Linda Frank. Who are here today too, so if you guys have any questions, you can feel free to ask them about anything. Um, they're the owners of the property located at three zero five nine seven four hundredth Avenue, this is in Dresser subdivision just north of Bellevue. Uh, the property is currently zoned C one for commercial, and the owners are requesting a change of use to the R one residential. A public health hearing was held by the zoning commission on Monday, January twenty-fourth. And there were no objections from the public at that time, and all four members of the zoning commission. That were present at the meeting recommended approval without conditions for the zone change. Um, so I do have, um, a PowerPoint that just has some more background information, so we can go through that pretty quickly here. So this is an aerial, uh, image of the location that we're talking about, and the property is shown in that like bluish green color there. Um.
You can move over if you'd like to see what's.
Thank you, so this was part of the Dresser subdivision, which was originally planted in the early nineteen sixties. Uh, when the order, the zoning ordinance was adopted, they adopted the zoning map, uh, that was in nineteen seventy-six, so that was after. The subdivision was already developed, um, and at that time, this whole area was adopted as R one residential. Uh, but then in nineteen seventy-nine, there was a request made to change that lot, and then. The two lots north of it and then a portion of, and I'll have that on the next slide showing exactly what that area was, but. It was zoned to commercial because they had the restaurant and rental cabins, so that made sense at that time, and subsequently. They split off properties and sold it, and, um, that's what we have there today, so the previous use was restaurant. You can go to the next slide. Um, so this is the current zoning map, and so the area in red is the commercial district I was talking about. Um, and again, their property, that is, they're making a request for the zone change today is in that tealish color there. Um, so the current state of things, the, it was a restaurant, they're no longer in operation. Uh, it is a non-conforming lot, uh, meaning that if it was zoned to R one. The minimum square footage for a lot is twenty thousand square feet, this one's just shy of it, eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty, something like that. Um, but. I don't, I wouldn't foresee any issues with that, what they would do is tear down the building, they could rebuild on the same footprint or smaller.
So the land between that and the river, that's core property, right?
It is, yeah.
Do they have use of that? Or how? You do, is that kind of, that could be. Almost considered part of your property then too, or use usable property. Well.
We own it. Ten foot outside the door of the building from there down to the rivers, court of engineers, we got to be a permissioned use. With the steps or for dock space right now, which we don't use right now.
Is there actually a lease for that or not?
Uh, I think so, with the Jackson County Conservation areas.
Okay. Wasn't that given up here a couple of years back, I know when you took the docks, and that's gonna get used to be.
Yeah, I still have, uh, I think. Two years on the contract, if we don't use them, then I think we lose them after that.
I'm also on the conservation, where we had some issues with some of the trees down there. So are there any problems on your property or next to it, or?
We have trees, they're all on the court, on the course land.
Even that one.
Yes, it is. Of course.
Thanks.
So just wanted to have a little slide here on some of the benefits and, um, maybe concerns. Benefits is that it would be consistent with the surrounding land uses to zone back to our one residential. The areas mostly seasonal dwelling or single-family dwellings. Changing from commercial to residential would be a less intense use of the lands. Uh, generating less traffic, less demand for parking, and less water demand as well. Um, concerns, like I mentioned, just the lot size being smaller. Um, yard setback requirements, but again, I kind of addressed that with talking about how they could rebuild on the same footprint. Um, and then the sewage disposal, just being able to, then that's something that's for that whole area, um, as you guys are well aware.
Yeah.
Subtic and most being kind of close there, so. And just got the project going on to get that fixed. But that's all I really have, the other slides that I have are just information on the lot requirements and uses allowed in. Either commercial or residential uses, just kind of informational in case you guys wanted to see that.
There is a working systemic system there now.
There is, yes.
It's the same system you're using with the restaurant, correct?
That got a lot more use.
Yeah. I would think.
Should be good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Did Frank Swiss make any statements or comments? Okay. I'm making a motion for the public hearing. I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Guess we don't have any comments, right?
I don't think anybody from the public wished to make any comments, I don't see anybody that would, so, um. All those in favor closing the public hearing, say.
Hi.
Hi.
I, motion carried.
No.
So.
We have to wave.
When we make a motion for the ordinance, then we can waive the second and third reading. So, um, do we have the ordinance?
Okay, so you're gonna, so in your motion that. Will you, if if you choose to approve the ordinance, you're going to, at that point, in the same motion, approve the second, waiving the second.
Right.
Okay.
Is it ordinance two ninety-nine?
As it says on your agenda.
So, okay, make that motion. For the second to approve ordinance number two ninety-nine and to waive the second and third reading. So it would become effective upon publication, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, motion carried.
Thank you.
So she will get the ordinance published, and as soon as it's published, it's in effect.
Okay, thank you.
That's nice, nice piece of effort today.
Okay.
You're good, free to go.
Never end a one of these. Come back anytime.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Okay, um, you wanna call David and tell him he can join us? Um, for our session, Lashandra?
So this is just a work session, are we due to, uh? Making decisions?
I don't, I don't, are we making decisions?
No, it's just.
Hey, you ready?
We, we can, uh, Jeremy.
Little update from seven judicial, um, the feds are. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollar behind on payments. They're redoing their system to make it work better. But we have enough to keep it rolling, so, but it sounds like. Other than that, I have second motion.
I would, I would second.
Motion in a second to adjourn.
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.